Stop that. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, everyone that's here and everybody watching at home. We will open the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting October 19th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. Roll call, please, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, remain today to cook matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four, mayor's comments. Thank you to our officers who are here tonight, who will keep us safe during our meeting. And I just appreciate everyone being here and look forward to a good meeting tonight. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes 4-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
None tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition, city events.
Thank you, mayor. Board, um, Richard asked me to announce that, um, trunk or treat will be from 30 to 6:00 PM at Booby Nature Park behind the playground, um, I guess it's this Saturday, uh, the 21st. Uh, we will also have movie in the park at approximately 6:00 PM in the same location, uh, after the trunk or treat. Uh, the movie will be Hotel Transylvania. Richard also said that he will be, uh, giving a long events, well, not super long, but a detailed events on the upcoming events, uh, for the holiday season, next meeting. Thank you.
Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports, A, community services report.
Good evening, board. Uh, we've been pretty busy over in the Public Works and Planning and Engineering Office. Projects completed by Public Works, uh, over the month of September, they completed the chipper service for the month, total of 14 truckloads, dug out and repaired a collapsed road, Dogwood Court, replaced numerous old street signs and stop signs throughout the city, finished right-of-way mowing, patched holes on Northwest Highway and Old Nashville Road and Taylor Road, picked up trash along Highway 196, a total of 23 bags, worked on the gate at the city shop slash fire department, bush hogged lake dams and trails in the park, prepared Black Pine Road for upcoming paving, rocked a shoulder of Birch Bark Drive and rocked a washout spot on Dogwood Drive. And then for our Planning and Engineering Group with codes, uh, we issued four residential building permits. We completed 18 engineering inspections, 121 building inspections. Our codes department has continued to follow up and monitor progress with Hallmark, with their corrections of property maintenance deficiencies at Roundtree Apartments. And then to provide a urban growth boundary update, we had our last committee meeting with the county on Monday. And there will be two public hearings with the Williamson County Coordination Committee on November 7th at 6:00 PM and November 15th at 6:00 PM. And those will be located at the Williamson County Complex located at 1320 West Main Street, Franklin, Tennessee. It's where you go and get your car tags. And it'll be kind of tucked around the side of that building. There's a meeting space back there. And that completes my report.
Any questions? Thank you. Item 8B, police department report, Chief Humphries.
Good afternoon. We'll kind of recap last month briefly. We have a, uh, we had a little dip in staffing there from 2625. Uh, I know we worked really hard on, on work, put some together stuff to keep our staffing up. And rest assured, that officer left for personal reasons, nothing that Fairview, Tennessee or the police department did. So we're having interviews tomorrow, uh, with some good candidates, hoping that we replace that officer. Had a little bit of a tick in overtime, uptick in overtime. That's due to some special events, nature fest, staffing, the homecoming parade. And then that, that comes with spillover from, uh, more activity. You'll see in our activity portion, those officers working near the end of their shift, they get an arrest and they stay over, uh, to finish that, that arrest. That, that creates a little bit of uptick. Uh, 611 hours and training hours. That's again, a really aggressive month for us. We got a lot of training in. We're excited about that. It consisted of some basic in-service, knife fire, pistol optics instructor, the new taser tins that, that you approved, the instructor course for that, and then some BBT card investigations for the month. So really good month. This is just some photos from the night fire that the officers participated in, trying to get them acclimated to those low-light conditions, uh, in that the problems with the flashing blue lights, if you've ever experienced strobe lights at any haunted house, you'll see that the images in front of you dance back and forth. So we're trying to train, train those officers in that environment to be successful, have a successful outcome. So it was a really good night of training. Next slide. Operation report, um, again, another really heavy month. Prior to, uh, these last few months where we're staffed up, we stayed somewhere below the thousand call range in self-initiated activity. And we've been well over that past couple of months. So very, very busy for us right now. Next slide. You'll see that, that translates again, another heavy month in arrests, 132, domestics, three DUIs, nine. Uh, we have one officer I'd like to give a shout out to, Officer Guzman. Uh, we had in, when I ran these stats, we had 55 DUI arrests for the, the year that I ran the stats on, and he had 35 of those. So he's working really hard to get those people off the streets here that, that will, you know, potentially cause an accident and injury or harm to people. Uh, drug charges up to 62. Again, those officers out there being very aggressive, looking to try to clean that stuff off the streets in a very good month for that. Theft was down a little bit at 3, 153 citations, traffic accidents, 26, uh, property damage at 23 and, uh, injury at three. And again, we're glad to report no fatalities. So it was a good month on that. We did have a nature fest, um, that we provided a concession stand for, and we were able to bring in $1,927. That again goes completely to shop with a cop. Helps to fund that effort out for the Christmas thing. The Fairview Association of Family and Community donated $150 to that cause also. Uh, so we're glad to take that money in, help the kids out. Additionally, Fairview Nutrition had a fundraiser on their own for, uh, our Shop With The Cop program and donated $1,084. And then they, um, seeing that we often do a concession, they donated a brand new Blackstone Grill to PD for the food preparation for those fundraisers. So a big shout out to them and thank you to Fairview Nutrition. So that's, uh, does it for the month. Any questions?
That's awesome.
All right. I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you. I had asked a couple, three meetings ago about some extra surveillance in neighborhoods.
Right.
And, uh, I've already had some response back from that, and I've actually seen it personally myself, and I want to thank you for that.
Good. Just, uh, we, we get a lot from either, from a commissioner passing down, the city manager will have issues with, uh, some lumber thefts on job sites or speeding in areas. And when that trickles down, we put that out as a, as an all-police email out to this, to the department so they can give attention to those areas that are needed. So thank you for that communication.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item 8C, fire department report, Chief Hughes.
Mayor, commissioners, good evening. This is fire department report for the month of September. Uh, we responded to 115 emergency calls for the month. Uh, again, that's up from last year. Uh, we've seen pretty much steady increase every month of this year, uh, on the number of calls we're getting. Uh, we had 18 overlapping calls, uh, this month. Again, just to remind you, that's when we've already got a crew out on a call and another call comes in before they can clear that call. We had three incidents where fires were extinguished. We had a dwelling fire in the city and two dumpster fires. Uh, we had eight mutual aid, uh, calls to surrounding jurisdictions. Uh, our average response time was down, uh, this month, uh, at five minutes, at five minutes, five seconds. And then the time operno scene was also down at, uh, 15:04. Uh, and some of that comes from just an average. Uh, we had, uh, basically created a one-long call for the July 3rd event. So we're still dropping that average down because we were there all day for that. Next slide. Uh, in September, uh, this is the call breakdown. Again, we're still running about, uh, nation average, uh, 75-plus percenters, medical calls and then the rest of it in there. One thing I forgot to mention on the other slide, again, we remind people to call 911. I think Jake touched on it. Last time I had someone that was, uh, having a cardiac event that left a message on my phone twice, my desk phone, uh, on a weekend. And when I called back, uh, when I, when I got my messages, uh, the next day, I called the person. It was still the weekend and they were still experiencing the pain. So, uh, advised them to call 911. We responded to that call and she was transported. So again, call 911 is the, it's the best way. If, if there's an emergency, call 911. We'll get their dispatch. We'll, uh, get the right personnel to that call. Uh, heat map, uh, still looking kind of the same. Those, those hot areas are still hot, uh, right through here in the middle of the city and then, uh, out the 96 corridor. Uh, we have been picking up more and more calls down toward 840. Uh, most of those are, uh, traffic accidents. Uh, fire prevention activities, uh, we had 40, uh, the fire marshal, uh, did 45 fire and life safety occupancy inspections and follow-ups. Again, we've only had a few minor corrective action notices issued. He locate, geolocated six, uh, fire hydrants and that's basically put them in our mapping system. So as, as we get a call, we know what, uh, type of hydrant and how much flow it's got as we're going to a call. Uh, he did, uh, 12 plan reviews were completed and then, uh, we had public, some public education events. Uh, if, again, if any city residents need, uh, smoke alarms installed in their homes, uh, please call us. Uh, he'll set up a time. We'll get a crew out to install those in your home. Excellent. Uh, for September, we had 493 hours of training. Jake has been using and, and the guys have been using the training tower a lot. Uh, next month, we'll have some live burns in there for some live burn training. Uh, so it is getting its use. Anybody have any questions?
On the 18 overlapping calls.
Yes, ma'am.
When, when you're on a call and then there's an overlapping call, how, how is that handled?
So, uh, what we will do, if, if it's a call that, uh, say a fire call, that's going to take everybody that we have, uh, on duty. Uh, so two units would at least go on that. So what usually happens is if we have one unit on just a, a medical call, the next unit will respond to the next call that comes out, whatever it is. And Jake or I, or if we're on duty Monday through Friday, uh, during the week, uh, and it's a, a medical call or something like that, we would be the third backup. So we, we've run several medical calls and we've had three in a row before. Because usually the second, we don't have an ambulance, uh, for a few minutes. They're coming from another station. Um, but we would, uh, we can handle two calls, uh, at the same time. That third call kind of, sometimes we either would have to ask for mutual aid from the county if they're available or Jake and I run that call till the first unit can clear. Usually if there's an ambulance with them, they can clear that call, uh, pretty quickly if they need to. But if, if we're on a call without an ambulance, we're, we're not allowed to abandon that patient. So we have to stay there till we can give them, give them off to a higher level of care.
Is 18 overlapping more than usual or about?
Uh, it's, it's been running anywhere from, um, I want to say 13 to 18 a month is what we're seeing during the month. Out of the 115 calls, 18 of them were overlapping.
And how many units are on at one, in one shift?
So, uh, we have minimum, we have staffing of six per shift. Minimum staffing is four. So there could be two people in class off, uh, for Kelly Day or off on PTO, scheduled PTO. So at that point, uh, we'd run two trucks, two people on each truck, uh, if they're, if we're at minimum staffing. So, uh, we could run an engine. We always run an engine and we either run engine or rescue based on what the call is. Uh, if we get a call for a fire, it's engine and ladder respond. Uh, if it's a wreck, engine and heavy rescue respond. So, but if, if we've got a medical call that we're, uh, there's only one unit runs to that medical call, which leaves another unit in service.
And when citizens ask why an additional, um, fire department, how do you respond to that?
Um, so it's a kind of a long process that, that we're kind of really at just the beginning stages of. Uh, we did an MTEST study. Uh, we had MTEST come in and based on, uh, the geography of our city and where it is, they, they said that to cover the city per ISO, we needed a total of four fire stations total. And that's not right now. That's one day when, when everything's kind of, um, and they located them. So they put a, a dot based on a five-mile coverage area, um, out on Deer Ridge, right there at the Deer Ridge area somewhere. They put another one on Highway 96 and Northwest Highway, somewhere in that area. The other ones out near Taylor Road and Highway 100. They had another one south of here, but it's all county out there. So that would be assuming our city road, it would really only cover about two and a half miles into the city. The other two and a half miles is outside the city that that would cover if we ever got that large. Um, so we got to that point as we, uh, have been seeing the call volume out on Highway 96. That's our longest response time. It's 10 to 12 minutes out there, no matter, I mean, if we're at the station, that's, that's the response time out there, uh, which is way outside of what the, uh, best practices and national standards are. Uh, we're supposed to be on scene, uh, from a, from dispatch, from leaving the station within four minutes is what the national standard is. And we're easily 10 minutes out there on any kind of call. Uh, so once we identified that the need, the next need, the highest volume of calls are out there, then we started looking at property out there. We were able to purchase a piece of property in that area that MTEST identified, um, last year, first of this year, or something like that. So. And then, so now we're on the, the piece of it of what apparatus, uh, are needed out there or could be needed, and then what the fire station would look like for response time. So that would put us in a four-minute response time to anywhere, um, basically going two and a half miles out toward the interstate or coming two and a half miles in or two and a half miles down Northwest Highway. So that's kind of how they do their study. So when you, you're going to build it for two units, we don't have to put two units out there when the thing opens up. You can put minimum staffing out there, but we, with RFQs, we built a station, what the station needed to look like staffing-wise and a future date. So if, uh, the growth comes out or continues to grow, we can staff a second unit out there. But, uh, I know the RFQs were in the, the paper, but it didn't really explain it all. Like, we have eight bedrooms. We wouldn't come onboard with 33 staff out there to start out with. We, we would go with minimum staffing, have minimum staffing at both stations, hopefully. And then that way we would, uh, be able to grow into it. One of the tough things about the station that we have now is when they built it, once we opened it up, it was full. We, we had no extra bedrooms, no office space. Uh, so, but it, but now we're 10 years into it and we're, we're just now fully, like, that station's absolutely full now. So.
And with additional, or with an addition to, of a, of, of an additional, um, fire department, that would, um, in, increase our ISO rating, which is directly related to our citizens' insurance premiums, which would have to go down.
Should, should lower our ISO rating, uh, because that's, that's one of the things that we've, uh, struggled with in the past in our ratings is our deployment, because we deploy from one station to everywhere. So, uh, our response times, again, don't meet what their standards are. Uh, so you start adding those stations, response times everywhere start going down. Uh, we'll have more staffing. So the two places that we struggled at, that we really couldn't improve on at the time and, and won't be able to until a new station comes onboard, is staffing and deployment. Because it, it takes another station to get over that next step.
Thank you.
And, and this is a long process. I know the RFQs came out. There won't be a station out there this week. I mean, we're, we're looking at, if, if you said, "Go now, build this," we've got it funded and everything. Uh, it would be late '25, early '26 before I think we could really feasibly open a station because of design time, build time. Uh, you know, we'd have to hire staffing. Fire trucks right now, uh, are taking 500 days to build where they used to take 300. Uh, ladder trucks are taking 800 days to build. So, uh, it's even, even that. Like, you, you may start building your truck that goes into the station way before the construction ever starts on the station. So.
And thank you for pointing that out, because I think sometimes when our citizens see stuff in the paper, like RFQs, that's just a request for information. That, that has nothing to do with it's going to be built tomorrow. So it's just us trying to prepare for our future.
Correct.
So I want everybody, you know, to understand that we, we have to prepare for our future. That's just, uh, part of being, you know.
Responsible.
Yes, responsible. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that's a good reason for being fire safe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8D, finance report, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I've given you four documents. Uh, this first document is summary financial statement. It's a, it's a document that, that separates out each account. If you look in the top left-hand corner, you'll see a, a number in bold, the 110, everything with 110 on it's operating. You look at 112, that's park, uh, and so forth down the line. Uh, this report shows revenues in detail and the, um, expenditures by total by department. So I'm thinking this is what I'm going to put on the website. Um, as y'all look over it, have any questions, feel free to email me if you would like to see something else on the website. Um, I'm, I'm up, I'm fine with that, but I feel like this gives a good snapshot of where we are, uh, at this current point in time. I've also given you a copy of your individual Board of Commissioners' budget and has every line item in your budget. Uh, you're welcome, uh, just for your information. Also, continue, I'm going to continue to give you the, uh, bank account balances. This is, uh, these balances right here are for as of today. These are not the September 30th balances. And then, uh, except for the reserve is the official, uh, 9/30/2023 balance. So I feel like we're in, in good shape financially. Um, it really is, uh, good to be able to, uh, look at, um, numbers that are in real time and it feels good to be back on, on track. And any, anything, any questions anybody ever has, feel free to give me a shout.
And I, I appreciate you putting that out on the website because that way our citizen, citizens can see where we are financially. Anyone, any questions about finance? Item 8E, city manager report, Mr. Darty.
Thank you. I just have, uh, three things to report on tonight. We, I'm excited. Uh, spent a long time coming. We're, um, I'm onboarding our new, uh, park program coordinator, Brianna, uh, Bailey, um, tomorrow, and her first day will be Monday. And we've also got, uh, as, as Chief said, we've got, uh, we've got interviews for one position in police. We've got interviews for, uh, we've got, there's still, uh, a, a position in fire that we're, we're looking to. But we're getting, we're getting a lot of good quality applicants, um, also looking to do interviews for a naturalist position and a maintenance worker in the park. So we're, we're starting to fill some of these positions that we had, uh, been planning on. Also wanted to announce that we have received, uh, uh, from MTEST, a draft for our, uh, for an RFQ for our new zoning ordinance, um, uh, development. And we will be reviewing that. We will, um, uh, depending on what Griggs and Aloney and Ethan come up with, uh, we're probably going to come up with some sort of steering committee. Uh, this is probably going to be anywhere from a year, a year and a half, possibly two-year process. But this is going to be a game changer for, for the city. Uh, and it's something that I feel like is just detrimental. Uh, we were in the process, uh, before all the turnover, getting this going and, and it kind of, kind of hit the brakes and for no other reason than just other things took priority. Um, but we've, we've got that back going now and, uh, we should be, uh, getting some information on that pretty soon. Uh, next week, I will be in Knoxville for my first city manager, uh, conference. And I am, um, looking forward to it, but also, um, it's really interesting to, to see the issues that other cities have and, and it, it makes me very grateful to be, uh, in Fairview a lot of times. Uh, we don't do everything right all the time, but we, we sure do a lot of things right. And I, I just, um, I like going to these just to, a lot of times it's, you can pick stuff up that other people are doing right, but a lot of times it's, it's just, man, I'm, I'm glad we don't, we're not doing that in, in our city. But, um, anyway, that's, that's all I have for my city manager report. Thank you.
Any questions?
I got some, I think it's time we give the, the staff a hand for all they've done this, like, since the last meeting. And I'm so tickled to death to hear about all the horrors, especially in the park. It's been a long time coming.
Item number nine, consent agenda, 9A, meeting, uh, minutes, October 5th, 2023, Board of Commissioner's regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Nine, item nine passes 4-0. Item 10, old business, we have none tonight. Item 11, new business. Item A, Resolution 63-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners, accepting the playground entrance sign design and authorizing the work. Vice Mayor Butler, slash Parks and Landscape Board.
You guys are the one behind it, aren't we?
Not giving up on this.
So, you know, we didn't change anything, and the deck that I sent out to everyone just had a few additional sort of explanations of things, so you can kinda get a better understanding of what we saw when we looked at the space and then, you know, the plan. You guys have any other questions about that, wouldn't you? Yep, Mayor.
I was just gonna say, if you wanna talk on the mic, sorry. People at home can't hear real well.
Of course, yeah. So the plan's the same as what we presented last time. You know, I know that Mayor Anderson had come up with some ideas for us to go back and reconsider, and then she decided, you know, to pull those back. So as a board, we decided we would just kinda hone in on the plan that we presented. Happy to answer any questions about that in particular.
This packet has a little bit more of the measurements of the signage column to help the city engineer staff put that out for bid.
Is there, are there any other slides that, thank you.
Well, this was the original treehouse playground signage that we were able to find and is in really good shape, so we're excited that we can reuse that on the, on the entrance sign as well, kind of a nod back to the history and the past of the park and playground. There's a rendering of what it would look like with the sidewalk, and then some of the dimensions laid out. Again, this is gonna be subject to engineering and, you know, final design, but this is our estimates, best guess of what that would look like. The other are standing there in between the columns.
Waiting on the sign.
You go to the next one, you'll see, I think, yeah. So the, the two columns will feature stainless steel etched signs that will be embedded or, you know, placed on the, on the stone. One that is a history of the park that was put together with help from. Starts with the gold level sponsors there at the bottom as well. Those signs are twenty-six by eighteen. How the other side will look. Silver, bronze, and friend level sponsors listed out. Questions on those? Go to the next slide, please. Then finally, we just have some cost estimates on some of the additional signage that needs to go into the playground, safety signs, you know, handicapped signs, those sorts of things, and estimates that we pulled from a website, so you can get a sense of what those cost. Signs we estimate we needed, I can't remember. Six or eight signs, I think, additional, so.
We did a little bit of research and found an online company, obviously, that where they need, maybe they can find it cheaper.
Yeah, that's it.
So the construction of this, obviously, we already have the, the treehouse playground sign part, but the rest of it, that will go out for bid, right?
Move to approve.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Eleven A passes four-zero. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your time.
Item eleven B, resolution sixty-four dash twenty-three, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent with RS forty, single-family residential zoning, and approving a plan of service, seventy-one fourteen, Elrod Road, city planner. And if anyone's here to represent, come forward.
Mr. Jeffrey Pape and Ms. Tammy Hyler submitted to the city to be annexed in, and they are now at their first reading with the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission and a positive recommendation from planning staff.
Move to approve.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item eleven B passes four-zero. Item eleven C, resolution sixty-five dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer Facility, city engineer. And if there's anyone to represent, please come forward.
Good evening, Board. Like Mayor Anderson has just said, this is a site development agreement for Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer Facility. I just wanna state that this site development agreement has been edited since this project was approved by the BOC and not the Planning Commission. And so it states in the site development agreement, the, the resolution is number forty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of City of Fairview, Tennessee, to hear an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on the City of Fairview, Tennessee, approving the site plan for Elevate Gymnastics and Cheer Facility. This project shall require a site reclamation bond in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand and two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, and I believe that's, oh, and I'd just like to state that this site development agreement is probably different than the ones you have seen previously, and that is due to it being modified to be for commercial properties. I think it became knowledge to the staff that previous site development agreements were more so directed towards residential properties, subdivisions, things of that nature. So we've got a stronger site development agreement that is more related to commercial properties, and, and just in regard to the site reclamation bond.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
That is coming.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you. Item eleven C passes four-zero. Item eleven D, resolution sixty-six dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute a site development agreement contract for Westway Apartments, Unit Two, city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. So this site development agreement, as she stated, is for Westway Apartments, Unit Two, consisting of eighty units distributed among five buildings. It's supported by resolution PC zero-six dash twenty-three, and the site reclamation bond is in the amount of four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
May I have a question, please? As far as sewer taps, how many will this require?
We don't have that information right offhand, but I can, I can look into that for you.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Mayor, there's eighty, eighty units is what was on the development agreement, so eighty, eighty lots.
It would be eighty, eighty taps.
I wanna say there's maybe a hundred existing units at Westway, somewhere around that number?
I can look that up if you just give me a little time.
That's okay, just a rough estimate, it's around that number.
I'm just compiling numbers as much as anything.
And I did wanna point out, so the community and the citizens know, no one on this board had anything to do with approving these apartments. Just want y'all to know that. Not tonight, but in the initial approval. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item D passes four-zero. Item eleven E, resolution sixty-seven dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing Piedmont Natural Gas Company to perform open-cut excavation along Northwest Highway. This will be deferred to the next meeting?
The applicant spoke with our office this afternoon and asked to be deferred to the November second meeting. So.
I make a motion to defer.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Item eleven E passes to defer four-zero. Item eleven F, discussion on RFQ submission for Fairview Fire Station Thirty-two, Chief Hughes.
All right, this is just an update. RFQs closed, six firms sent in their qualifications for us. We have created a committee within the fire department to review those. We've been reviewing them for about the last week and a half. We had some great submissions. Several had relevant projects in and around middle Tennessee area, some had even in other states, so we've been reviewing those. We hope to bring something forward to the board, maybe in the, the first or the second meeting of November, to engage a firm to do this work for us. But we have started setting up some interviews with, with the firms, and they'll come in, and I've got the city manager and our committee at the fire department to meet with them so that we can make sure we get the best value for the city and the citizens throughout this project. But whoever we engage would be the firm that we engage from the, the start of the project through ribbon cutting down the road. And our first major step is we're, we're hoping to get a floor plan, elevation, and a cost estimate on what this project could cost. But that's kind of as far as we've committed to go. And even if we engage a firm, we only pay them for the work that they do, so it's not forward paid or anything like that. So it will just be as, as they do work for us, they, then they would invoice us for the services they provide. And like I said, initially, we wanna get to the point where we get an estimate of what this project could cost, so then we can make some decisions on, on how it will be funded and when we could possibly fund it. Questions? And you guys, I'll, I'll give updates as we go along. Obviously, you guys will have to be signing off on stuff as we, as we go along, like, to engage the firm. I feel like the, the board would have to approve engaging that firm to, to do the work, so as soon as we bring something forward, I'll have that on the agenda for you. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Thank you.
Ms. Jones? Oh, I'm sorry, it's just for discussion. Just have it. Okay. That brings us to item twelve, round table, round table, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Board and all the people that's here tonight, I appreciate y'all being here. First off, I wanna mention that I had been asked several times to come to a county meeting just to be there and sort of let them know that Fairview's still in existence out here. So I made my appearance at their last meeting, the first, second Monday of the meeting of the month. And I put my name on the agenda, on the citizens' talk, I guess you might say. Anyway, before the, I actually got there, I was about seven or eighth down. There was the, some people there talking about horse trails in the county, and we're in support of that. And then they mentioned Bowie Park being in Franklin. So when I got there, it wasn't in Franklin anymore, it was in Fairview. So y'all have seen Gordon Hampton, when I turned around and looked at him, he was smiling from ear to ear. Anyway, my main goal to go there was to, more or less, thank the, their commission for their support on the softball World Series, and thank them for their continued support of the Parks and Rec Board. And that was my main goal of going. And when Gordon got up, he said, "Well, Wayne Hall forgot to mention something." And he said, "I wanna thank them for their support on all the lights that was put in out there at, at the facility at the night." LED lights, I believe, is that right, Stuart? LED lights. But anyway, that got a good laugh there. So that's, that was my meeting with the county, and had a lot of good friends there that would come up, and since, I've had some emails from the people on the horse trails and everything. And unfortunately, I have not been able to respond to them, because my laptop is going south on me, and I've got to, you know, I wish I had their phone numbers, I would call them and thank them for their support. The next thing that I would like to mention, I think y'all know that I've been doing quite a bit of research on the water and sewer issue that we have here in Fairview. I did find the letter from Dr. Sandra Dudley that is saying that we were supposed to have several hundred sewer taps available once the construction of the pipeline was done, which it was completed several years ago. So therefore, at that meeting that we approved the Trails of Brownland, that was our main goal, was to make sure that they had sewer capacity before we voted on it. And once we were guaranteed by the director of the Water Authority, that's why we voted on the existing PUD unit of the Brownland, Trails of Brownland Farms. So I just wanted to bring that to light, and this is one of the issues that I think that the task force needs to address once they go to talking to the Water Authority. And I do have a copy of that letter, if y'all would like to have a copy of it. Thank you, and thank you for being here. Thanks for all this work the citizens, I mean, the city employees do, they do a great job. I think y'all heard all the, the things that they done tonight. Thanks again.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a quick thank you to the Parks and Landscape Committee for working so hard, getting that signed done, ready to see that project kinda come together and finish up that exterior. And just a shout out to all our staff. The work is never done, because we're continually always working to try and be better, and I had some great conversations with our staff this week, and I feel like we're starting to get our arms around everything, and I'm excited for some of our new faces to start to leave their mark on Fairview and where we're headed. So a shout out to them for all they do. I feel like they don't ever stop, they probably feel the same way sometimes, but, but thank you, guys. Very excited about the RFQ for the zoning ordinance. I know they're probably very excited to, to try and get that going, and then trunk or treat on Saturday, just a reminder about that on twenty-first. That's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited about the zoning ordinance as well. I think that's gonna bring some clarity to a lot of questions that people have. It's, it's gonna be just really something that's important for our city moving forward. Let's see. I know that Chief, Chief Humphries brought up Officer Guzman, I wanna give a shout out to him, too. A lot of times, I'm at my business late, and now that the time's changing and it's getting dark, and Christmas time coming, he always checks on me. He comes to the window, 'cause I have glass all the way around, and he's like, "You good?" And we have kind of a signal, if I'm not good, if somebody's hiding under, you know, or something, you know, he knows. And he's just, he's always there to help. And it just excites me to know that, you know, people who are impaired when they're driving, they not only put themselves at risk, but they put anyone on the road, our family members, ourselves at risk, and knowing that he's out there just, you know, you know, pulling over so many people and, and making sure that they're not on the road impaired, that, that's, that's a big deal. So thank you to him. So thank you to him. I always thank Todd Bradshaw, but it doesn't matter when I call him. People call me all the time, whether they have a tree down or a deer that's been hit and it's in their yard, and I can call him, and he answers the phone immediately and he's on it. So, I mean, that, the public works, they're, they're always on task and ready to help. I know that Ethan and Tom and Rachel, Patrick, I mean, I, I don't even look at the clock a lot of times when I make a phone call because I feel like it's immediate that I, you know, need to get an answer for a citizen or something done, and they're always willing to stop what they're doing and, and even if it's after hours. And I, I just appreciate y'all so much for, for being there for us. I went to a GNRC meeting that is Greater Nashville Regional Council. I'm a voting member of that. And I went there to the meeting yesterday. They informed me, I, I get, you know, like people will say, well, this is, you know, Daughter's Day or Son's Day, and I, I don't, you know, I think they add things all the time because it's like, okay, I didn't know it was that day. But evidently, not only is this Breast Cancer Awareness Month, it is Awareness Month for Cyber Security. And we got a lot of good information from them. And just real quick, I just wanted to say that there was a fellow there and he was, his name is, I don't know if I can pronounce his last name, but his name is Scott, and he brought up a, you know, something important that people, it's important to do two-factor authentication on things because there's so many people out there right now trying to steal identity. And when that happens, if they get into your bank accounts and, you know, stuff like that, a lot of times, there's nothing anybody can do about it. So he brought up just, you know, I just wanted to let people know the, the two-factor authentication really helps and just making sure that you're being safe on the internet and not, you know, change your passwords every once in a while and, and help your, you know, your parents that are seniors because a lot of times they might not understand, you know, how they're making themselves vulnerable. So that was a, a really good talk. And I just wanted to, you know, his, his last name's A U G E N B A U M. And he's, he's, he can be looked up, but on like the, you know, like Facebook or whatever, where you can just go in and see all the different items that he talks about to help us stay safe. So that was a, a good talk yesterday. And also, just one other thing is there, I found out that the county, which I'd like to, or the state, I'd like to look into this. There is a $1,000 grant for broadband, and they were bringing up if we, if a city has a park that they use this service, like if we, if we look into this grant, it's 100% so we don't have to match with it. So I'm, I'm going to talk to Tom about that, but we could get internet in the park where if somebody, say they have their grandchildren or their children at the playground and they want to do some work while they're there, then it will, they will have internet access. So that, that was really exciting to find that out. So we'll check into that. And just, just to let everybody know, there are two Fairview High School home games left. One is tomorrow night at 7:00. It's home game. And then next week, just so everybody knows, the home game is on Thursday. So it is at home. It's the last home game at senior night. And then our Fairview Community Theater tomorrow night as well. It's so exciting. We're able to utilize the Triangle School at the Historical Village. And they're going to have something called Edgar Allan Poetry Reading. And the, people are encouraged to come and dress up. There is a costume contest. That will be at 7:00. And there are, they're going to have some plays next month, which I will point out. Also, our high school, before we meet again, they will have their plays at the end of this month. And just make sure to, it's the 27th, 28th, and 29th. So just make sure to look on the website because we, you know, would love to support our high school theater group. And thank you to the board members and our staff, and thank you for everybody who's here and everybody at home who's watching. And if you ever need anything, please just know that we're available for you. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.